I'd like to open up the regular meeting for the City of Crescent City. We've just come out of closed session. Do we have anything to report out?
Mayor, no final actions. We're taking in closed session.
Thank you. All right. Can you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Shalung, here. Councilmember, excuse me, Slert.
Here.
Council, Mayor Protam Murray. I'm not going to get this right. Lord have mercy, let's start over.
Hard to change.
Mayor Protam Ania.
Here.
And Mayor Murray.
Here, thank you. Thanks. And we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. And could the former mayor please lead us?
Ready salute.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome all of you in the audience. It's nice to see Crescent Elk School here and the rest of you. And welcome those who are viewing us online and those who will view us on Channel 4 later on. And we will move on to acknowledgements. The first one will be read by our city manager, which is a little bit out of protocol, but I've asked him to read this commendation because he too is an Eagle Scout.
My pleasure, Mayor, and thank you very much. And the achieving Eagle Scout is quite the achievement. And as a family in City Crescent City, we're very proud of Mark for achieving this high honor. So I'll read the-
Mrs. Standring is right here if you'd like to.
Is Mark here today?
And for Mark, Mark Standring has shown his dedication to the interest of the entire Crescent City community through his outstanding service as a member of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Mark has earned 29 merit badges and completed an Eagle Scout service project by planning, organizing, and supervising 25 people over a few months period involving an accumulation of 210 man-hours in renovating facilities at the Lando Del Rio Campground in Gasket, California. They grew installed a French drain system for the restrooms and construction vent caps for pipes on the roof of the building, as well as the eradicating of Scotch groom and non-native plants from the major portions of the grounds. Mark is the fifth in succession of his brothers to earn the Eagle Scout award. His commitment in service has not gotten unnoticed by others. Quite an achievement. That's a great, good project. Now therefore, Mayor Catherine Murray, on behalf of the entire Crescent City City Council, staff, and citizens of Crescent City, do hereby commend Mark for his outstanding service to the City of Crescent City and to the entire Del Norte County community. We express our respect and gratitude for your efforts renovating the Lando Del Rio Campground while maintaining the highest standards of excellence. It's great achievement and being an Eagle Scout, you are always an Eagle Scout from here on out. It doesn't go away. And it's a great building for a young man. And I'm very glad to have read this and meet you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to Mark. Thank you so much.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you for the acknowledgement. I wonder if at some point maybe I could get a copy of that and I could have it-
Oh, you have it.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Great. Because I know he would really like to see that himself too. So, thank you.
It's a real pleasure to be able to recognize Mark and his family for their achievements. And we wish him all the best. This next acknowledgement is a proclamation designating the second Sunday in December 2011 as Worldwide Candlelight Day. And I've asked Mr. Ania, who's councilmember, Mayor Protam Ania, to read this.
I'd like to ask Ellen McKenzie and Elizabeth Ania to come forward. They're members of the Compassionate Friends. And this is a proclamation supporting the designation of the second Sunday in December 2011 as the Worldwide Candlelighting Day. Where has every year in the United States nearly 150,000 infants, children, teens, and young adults die and countless tens of thousands are stillborn or are miscarried? And where has we recognized that our childrens are our countries, our states, and our cities' most valuable resource? And where has the local chapters of the Compassionate Friends provides a caring environment which bereaved parents, siblings, and grandparents can work through their grief with the help of others traveling the same road? And where has the Compassionate Friends Worldwide Candlelighting is the second Sunday in December and has become a symbolic day when these children are remembered around the globe? And now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims the second Sunday of December 2011 as Worldwide Candlelighting Day. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to observe this day by lighting a candle for one hour at 7:00 PM the second Sunday of December in support of bereaved families in the City of Crescent City and participate in other appropriate activities in remembrance of all children who have died. I witness therefore, hereon to set my hand on this fifth day of December 2011. And this is signed by Catherine Murray, our mayor, and also by all the council. And the, why don't you tell us when the game will be, where the candle lighting will be this Sunday?
The candle lighting ceremony will be on the second Sunday, December 11th, starting at 6:15 and lasting until 8:15 at K-School in Brookings. And everyone is invited.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Where is K-School, Beth?
I can't say-
Calmeopsis?
Oh, Calmeopsis?
Easy Street in Brookings.
Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to the consent calendar, but we're, our pulling item number five. The minutes will be reviewed at our next meeting, December 19.
Madam Mayor, I'd moved to approve as submitted, but I did want to mention that in the reporting from the city that once again, we have almost $5,700 bill for the last two-week period for police overtime. And there also is a, I think it's a clerical issue that keeps reoccurring that indicates that there's 13 police officers and no part-time. And it's my understanding, we have 12 police officers. We have two of those 12 are on light duty. And now we have an additional detective who is retiring at the end of this month. So actually, instead of 12, we have nine officers on duty, is my understanding.
And we'll address the issue of staffing again during the city council items under reports, concerns, and referrals.
Very good.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. Now we'll move on to public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Please note however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please come forward and state your name and if you're a city or county resident for the record. And please keep your comments limited to three minutes. And I'd like to add that we had, at a previous council meeting, had agreed apparently to put on the agenda, the Solid Waste Super Committee's directive for them to add any items for that committee. And I had decided that since the staff for the Solid Waste is not directed by the city council, that that should wait until our meeting on December 14th. So if you do have an item that you'd like to discuss regarding the Solid Waste, now is the time to do it. Are there any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Murray and the rest of the council. Councilmember Slert, you brought up the subject I was just going to address tonight about the critical need for police officers and the shortage here is. And I wanted to share my thoughts and how critical this is. And I thought I'd share the percentages, which you may already know of other area cities. Oh, my name's Roger Getlin. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I live in the city, I'm sorry. But some of the other area cities in our geography and what they spend on their general budget as compared to Crescent City. And I think city manager Palazzo, you indicated that 37% of the city budget is allocated to Crescent City's Police Department. So I thought I'd share the numbers with you. UKIA spends 38% of its budget for its police department. Fort Bragg is 43%. Arcata is 48%. And Willets is 59% of its general fund goes to its city police department. And we, as you know, are at 37%. And I think it begs the question with, my count, councilmember Slert was, I thought there were 10 working police officers right now. Three are on light duty, the total of 13. You're telling me it's nine? I guess that the detective is now retired. So that's a staffing issue that'll be addressed also. But I think it's time that this council address a real critical need. There are a lot of burglaries in town and they're not going away. I think it's drug-driven. And we need to start perhaps considering allocating a larger percentage of the city's general fund in line with what other areas do. Perhaps 3% to 5% higher to hire yet 3% to 5% additional officers in these critical times. Cresson City is a kind of two sides to it. The summer, we become greatly inflated. The winter time, much smaller, but there's, crime doesn't take a holiday. And I'm hoping that during your staffing concerns, you'll address this area and seriously consider upping the percentage of what we do allocate to our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item number eight, public hearings.
My name is Daniel. I live in the city.
Could you state your last name for the record? Thank you.
Last council meeting, Charles Slert told lies about me and I'm here to set the public record straight. On the signature collector, Charles Slert claimed her as elderly woman while collecting signatures for his recall. In no way was I rude or disrespectful to the elderly woman who was supposedly called crying about my visit to their door. Quite the contrary, they were rude to me and very insulting. I just walked away. Charles Slert used this trumped-up episode and his seat on the council as a political weapon with which to assault Donna Westfall in the recall effort against him. Since the elderly woman who allegedly made the complaint are Kelly Shalung's mother and her neighbor, and that Shalung, Murray, and Slert made what seemed to be coordinated statements on this issue against the appearance of a violation of the Brown Act, as well as a code of ethics violation for lying about a constituent on the public record and without investigation. I demand an investigation. I also believe I'm due for a public apology. Even though I wasn't mentioned by name, it wasn't hard for many people to figure out already. I believe my personal reputation has been harmed by the slander.
Thank you. Is there public comment?
Tim Hoon, I'm a county resident. Is this general public comment?
General public comment.
Public comment period?
Yes. Item number-
Doesn't have a number.
Not an item number, sorry.
Well, what a pleasure it is to see Catherine Murray as mayor there. Welcome, Mayor Murray. And so I was at home looking at the agenda and packet quickly earlier this evening, and I noticed that you had a proclamation supporting the designation of the second Sunday in December as Worldwide Candlelight? Did you read that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I was driving over here when you read that. So unfortunately, I missed it, but I read it. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, there's a lot of proclamations that, you know, are said at the beginning of city council meetings. And all different types of causes and whatnot, but they're all very meaningful to the people whose proclamations they, you know, bring here. And I'm not sure if there's anyone here in the audience for the Worldwide Candlelighting.
They've left already.
But yeah, but thank you to them for bringing this forward. Because I just want to mention, you know, I'm the youngest of five. You know, my older sister's eight years older, you know, and so she would be the first in line to have children, right? You know? And so she gets married, you know, and I'm like 15-years-old at her wedding and, you know, she gets married and everything. And so then they go to have a child. And well, then they, Sharon and Dan get pregnant and, you know, we're all thrilled, you know, as a family for a grandchild. Well, she has a miscarriage. So the sorrow and, you know, tragedy to that situation, you know, can only be, you know, felt by the people that brought this proclamation forward. So I really appreciate that for them. And then she went on to, you know, have three children and, you know, a year later and, you know, so it was wonderful. But there is a real loss that can really be felt and expressed through this candlelighting ceremony. So these proclamations that you, you know, have before you, you know, have a real meaning in people's lives and beyond just the proclamation that you, you know, state here today. And so thank you for having these things. And thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Is there other public comment?
Good evening.
Could you please state your name and if you're a city or county resident for the record?
My name is Amy Bradley and I live in the city. I have been involved in the recall process against councilmember Charles Slert. I have here a stack of petitions totaling 103 pages and 495 signatures demanding your recall. I watched the video from last meeting and feel compelled to demand an investigation into the violation of the code of ethics by councilmembers Slert, Murray, and Shalung. I don't believe that you three spoke the truth to the public. I am a witness to what transpired between Daniel Kelly and Mrs. Shalung's mother. The story that councilmembers Charles Slert told at the last meeting was a complete fabrication. The story Catherine Murray told about any of us bullying anyone into signing the petitions is also a fabrication. It's easy to understand why people of the public want you three recalled and you lie with such sincerity. Donna Westfall is out sick tonight, but I am handling in her formal complaint and demand for investigation into violations to the code of ethics. She states that Kelly Shalung misconstrued and fabricated getting signatures from Alzheimer's patients. Lastly, since you're so worried about the cost of an election, why don't you three just resign and make room for other people? Thank you.
Is there other public comment?
Mary McGinnis County. I actually wasn't going to say anything tonight, but listening to Daniel and Amy, I too watched the video and I saw the portion of the meeting that I missed last meeting. And I have to say that I was very disappointed. I'm just wondering if anybody has any knowledge of what Donna Westfall's background is. Anybody that has that knowledge would know that she would not go out and prostitute herself to Alzheimer's patients at an Alzheimer's center. I didn't even know we had one of those. And as far as the attacks that have been happening on councilwoman Westfall, she's our voice. I don't think we're being heard, except by councilwoman Westfall. I wasn't going to say anything, but I feel compelled. I would hope that we could all be adults in this community, those of us over 18, not do any mud-slinging, harassment, lying about other people. What does it serve? It doesn't serve me. And although I'm outside of the city limits, I'm affected by Crescent City. When people ask me where I live, I don't say just north of Crescent City. I say Crescent City. And I've always said, we have microscopic city limits. But all of us are incorporated in Crescent City. Please grow up. Please stop this. Please listen to what councilwoman Westfall has to say because she's speaking for us and we don't feel we're being heard by you. Congratulations, Madam.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and the-
Can I address that? Quickly?
Sure.
I want to say that I have no idea. Who is saying my mother was involved in anything because she has never said one word to me about being asked to do anything for recall or harassed by anyone? So the fact that you've brought my mother into this is very interesting. That's okay, I'm sure they'll read it or watch it. So my mom has never said a word to me about anybody coming to her door and harassing her. So I'm not sure why that's being brought up tonight. Number two, what I actually said about Ms. Westfall and our local care facility is actually in writing. That's why I said that. It wasn't something that I was told. It was put in writing by Ms. Westfall. So I'm not lying.
No, your comments are over. Could the city attorney address the Brown Act when the recall's not a city council item? So there is no violation of the Brown Act?
I, I'm not sure what was being said. Somebody thought that the three of you had similar ideas? Since you are all three being recalled, that's not too surprising. But that there was no item of city business that was discussed or voted on. It was just a response to the recall petitioning process or a comment on the recall petitioning process, so.
And we're allowed to discuss that amongst each other? It's not part of the city agenda?
I would say that's true. I mean, if, in the future, if the signatures are valid and there's sufficient valid signatures, you're going to have to take action to put it on the ballot and there will be city actions involved, but not with the signature gathering process is purely a private process.
Okay. I just wanted to have that clear. The city manager and I had talked about our agenda and we decided that we would move reports, which is item number nine above item number eight. And that is a report from the Health Education Coordinator, Jeff Wolsfeld, for the Tobacco Use Prevention Program and Crescent Elk sixth graders.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Wolsfeld with the Tobacco Use Prevention Program. I have some opening comments and then I'm going to do some introductions. It's an honor to be back before the council and I would like to update the council on a few things that have happened since we last met. We now have a smoke-free hospital. We now have a smoke-free community health center. We now have a tobacco-free lighthouse community center. And in partnership with the Crescent City Police Department, we will soon have five new smoke-free apartment communities in the city. And in partnership with the local childcare council, the American Cancer Society, Boy Scouts of America, Family Resource Center, and the North Coast Indian Development Center, we now have two 24-hour-day, smoke-free daycare providers who we call Gold Star Providers. And we're going to have more providers joining that program really soon. So at this point, I'd like to do some introductions. Over here, we have Mrs. Smith. She is a teacher with Crescent Elk Team Four. Back here, we have Mrs. Wolsfeld. She's also a sixth-grade teacher with Team Four. And Mrs. Freeman, right over here, she's responsible for all those letters you got. And thank you, Mrs. Freeman, for that. We also have a couple of Boy Scouts here, two young men over here, and they are here earning a badge, getting involved in community activities, and then going back and reporting back to their parents on what took place here tonight. So they got your back here. And speaking of backs, I got a bunch of kids here behind me. So if you could all stand up? These are all sixth-grade students with Crescent Elk Team Four. And I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves very quickly. So if we could start right over here, say your name.
I'm Jessica.
Okay.
I'm Jessica.
I'm Brittany.
I'm Carla.
I'm Jackson.
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 And over here.
I'm Jackson.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Today was nerd day, and so they don't look like they look like this morning. They had some really freaky glasses on and stuff, so now they look normal, but it was fun to see nerd day. Although a lot of great things have been happening, we still have a lot of work to do. Thirty-seven thousand people die every year in California from tobacco, and every year in California, 36,900 kids become daily smokers. One-third of illegal sales to kids in California take place within 1,000 feet of schools. Local resources, once dedicated to monitoring sales, are now focused on smoke-free apartment communities, expanding partnerships, along with working towards policy changes, which is why we are here tonight. A group of community members voted to focus energy and resources into other areas that can reduce exposure to secondhand smoke and, more importantly, to reduce youth access and exposure to tobacco in near schools, parks, and youth centers. In minor smoke, approximately 78 million cigarettes per year in California. We are proposing that the council approve a zoning policy that prohibits new tobacco retailers from opening within 1,000 feet of schools, parks, and youth facilities. These two photos reveal why a group of community members decided to pursue restricting the location of new tobacco retailers. These photos are why these students from Crescent Elk are here tonight. This is what they look at when they are at school, wondering what type of business will open near their school. This is another potential location of a tobacco retail store that is not only near a playground, but also near Front Street Park. The Old McVay Market, Grace Lutheran Church, and Foursquare Church is another area of concern where a tobacco store could open. It was not long ago when Pacific Market was located across from Crescent Elk and just down the street from Joe Hamilton. Now, we have a Family Resource Center, which is a model of what should be opening near our schools, parks, and youth facilities. We collected a total of 454 public surveys within the last year. Ninety percent of those people support a zoning restriction on new tobacco retailers. Of those people who smoke, 85% support a zoning restriction. The students also conducted their own in-school survey, in which some of them may be reporting on it. You also have a copy of that report in your folder. The great thing about this proposal is that it costs nothing to implement. There is no negative impact on current tobacco retailers, and there are no new enforcement Creating tobacco-free zones enhances the educational message regarding the dangers of tobacco and a commitment to protecting our children. We are proposing that Crescent City be number one in protecting children. I will now turn it over to a few of the kids who would like to express their thoughts on why there should be a zoning restriction.
Hi, my name is Lupe Rosales. I am in sixth grade. I am in Team Four. Thirty-six, 900 kids become daily smokers in California each year. Those 36, 900 kids will die about 13 years younger than if they even would have started smoking because of the new tobacco sales. I don't want my nieces to become daily smokers at the age of 13 because of the new tobacco sales. Thank you and please help us with the 1,000-foot buffer zone law.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Cochran and I attend Crescent Elk Middle School. I'm part of TUP. Did you know over 800 million packs of cigarettes are consumed by kids each year? Plus, each year, 1,000 kids become new daily smokers, but that's just the beginning. Did you also know that cigarettes are the most littered item in the world? Over 176 million pounds of cigarette butts are discarded each year. Also, 596 kids will ultimately die early from secondhand smoke. Please pass this law. Think about us, the kids.
My name is Trinity Barnes and I attend Crescent Elk Middle School. I'm in sixth grade on Team Four. Did you know that around 36,900 underage kids become daily smokers each year? That's just in California. Thirty-seven thousand people die from smoking each year in California. Twenty-three other communities have adopted the 1,000-foot law. Adopting this law wouldn't make us the first, but hopefully we wouldn't be the last. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Castle McCone. I go to Crescent Elk Middle School on Team Four and Sixth Grade. I want you to support 1,000-foot buffer zone because smoking could litter and destroy our lungs and our air. It's important that you make the law because every day, people try their first cigarette and ruin their lungs and breathing areas. Do you want to have trouble breathing? I don't.
My name is Rory Landeros. I attend Crescent Elk Middle School in Group Four. We surveyed sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and one of the results were 53% of the kids think it is easy for minors to buy cigarettes. Please help the 1,000-foot buffer zone.
My name is Perla Marquez de Fontes and I attend Sixth Grade in Crescent Elk Middle School, and I am on Team Four. My personal opinion is that we should pass the 1,000-foot zoning law because this is important to me because I wouldn't like to see minors smoking. It is bad for your body and affects your health. So, by passing this law, minors will not be able to buy these products from markets and stores because every day, more and more children are trying their very first cigarette. So, please support the 1,000-foot buffer zone of new tobacco stores around schools.
That basically concludes the presentation. In your folder, you did get a resolution of support from the Delnarque County School District, Boy Scouts of America, and the Healthcare District. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Does the council have any questions? We'd like to give each one of the students a City of Crescent City pin.
Oh, okay.
Before we do, I would just like to say that I am always very proud when we have the kids come to the council meetings and provide a voice for children. It makes a big difference to us when we're making decisions on what we do for the city and how it affects our kids and their future. And I was really excited when I was the mayor to come to your school and actually give out certificates to each of you for participating in picking up all of those cigarette butts in our parks. So, every time I see you, I want to say thank you for that because I think it's amazing. And I was going to ask if the kids had actually wrote letters to us. Can you stand? Oh, was it all of you? Oh, I didn't get all of them.
We each got a few.
I wanted to say thank you because the only mail I get are usually bills. So, it was really nice to get a letter from each one of you, and you did a very nice job, and you should be proud of yourselves. So, thank you.
They did a fantastic job. And I don't think I heard, I didn't remember hearing you say that you also influenced policy at the Delnarque County Fairgrounds for no smoking. So, you should get credit for that and also that the city adopted an ordinance for no smoking during parades, which I helped to enforce during the Christmas parade.
Thank you.
So, because of you students, we do have some healthy policies in our community, and you should be very proud of yourself and keep up the good work. Thank you, Jeff.
I would offer that I appreciate the students' passion, and they were very articulate tonight. So, you're learning to be very good advocates for good causes, so I salute you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we're going to kind of file out here. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Black for using one of the TUP pins over there, I think. He had a green one, and I see a highlighter, so we're spreading the word, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, kids. to staff to research the impact of an ordinance that the children are recommending?
Oh, I think they're asking for public comment on this item. Is that what you're asking?
Okay. I'm sorry. Well, we haven't closed it, so is there public comment?
My name is Kirk Golson, and I'm a county resident. And it seems to me that it's illegal to sell cigarettes to children under the age of 18. And if it restricts a person's choice of where they can put their business to do something illegal, I don't see the 1,000-foot barrier as, I just don't get it. If it's illegal to sell it to them, they won't walk 1,005 feet for the cigarettes? I don't get it. If it's illegal to sell them, why the restriction of 1,000 feet? I just don't get it as far as if it's economically viable for your business to be there and you've chosen that corner right across from Crescent Elk for certain reasons, for certain economic reasons, maybe, and I'm not saying that cigarettes, I don't smoke, I don't condone it, but on the other hand, I think economies and what people do and how you earn a living is important not to restrict where you can be and what you can do there. Thank you.
Well, we're not the ones to ask. I believe Mr. Wolsfeld would be a good person to have that discussion with, so I appreciate your comment.
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City. Yeah. I know what a can of worms was opened. I myself was a smoker, heavy smoker, for years. I quit in 1999. I often say the worst thing I ever did in my life was start smoking, and the best thing I ever did was quit smoking. But I know the can of worms that was opened up with just the ordinance of the no-smoking ordinance. I mean, we have a lot of places like downtown, you have your courthouse, where you have to be 50 feet away from any door or open window. And, well, I mean, some places, it's actually impossible because 50 feet is like, you know, you have to leave the building and go across the street only to have another building that you can't smoke in front of because they also have doors or windows. I'm trying to wrap my head around what 1,000 feet is. I mean, if they're having this problem with 50 feet, what is 1,000 feet? We have so many little schools around here. It seems like 50% of Crescent City is a school zone where you can only go 25 miles an hour during school. So, I mean, I'm wondering what a smoking ordinance without 1,000 feet would look like. I was hoping that maybe he had a...
Jesse, Jesse, you need to talk with them.
1,000-foot circles. Yeah. Look at that. That's half the town is cut off from people being able to sell, you know. I don't really care because I'm not smoking myself, but to tie the hands of business people, that's asking a lot, especially when you haven't asked the business people to even be here, I guess. Maybe they should have watched the ordinance. Also, I recently read something that tobacco money, the TUP money, is being used for pro-fluoride. Going through first five even, or they're pushing the fluoride agenda. And I would still like to have fluoride on the agenda. I mean, we haven't even been able to discuss whether we're going to be able to discuss this. I mean, over the years that I've been here asking to do it, we haven't been able to do it. Every time, it's been just a joke and it fell through and it wasn't on the agenda. I would like that put on the agenda. I was here a couple of times asking that the manufacturers of the stuff that they call fluoride, which isn't fluoride, fluorosilic acid, actually tell us what's in this stuff. And until they can do that, to have, for us to stop putting it in our water, to be sure what is exactly in our water, because the studies that I've seen, I mean, there's a whole myriad of stuff that's in it.
Okay, you're getting off topic. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Said you were getting off topic with the fluoride. This was about the tobacco issue.
Well, actually, it was about, because they're using tobacco money for it, which should be illegal.
It's still off topic. That's not our, that's...
I'm sorry. I thought it was on topic. I'm really sorry to see that you're the mayor. I think you're like the worst choice that I've ever seen.
Is there any other public comment on this matter? Seeing none, and we will close public comment on the report that we just received and move on to item number eight, public hearings. Note, if you challenge a decision of the city council in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city council at or prior to the public hearing. This is based on Government Code 65009. And item number eight, conduct a public hearing regarding the rezoning of 820 F Street. Consider waive full reading and introduce an ordinance entitled Ordinance Number 765 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the City of Crescent City zoning map for APN 118-230-45.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself. The lovely Rumiano Cheese Factory is my client at work.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to turn this over to Eric Taylor.
This is application RZ11-01. It's already been described as an application for a rezoning for parcel 118-230-45. The physical address is 820 F Street. The applicant, Bear Rumiano, had recently purchased this property. The property is located adjacent to the Rumiano Cheese Factory. Currently, it has a six-unit apartment complex on the property. What he's asking for is to rezone it from the current zoning, which is residential-professional, to C1, which would bring it more in line with the current zoning of the cheese factory. And I'll just go through real quick. I'll go through a PowerPoint presentation to give you a better idea of what we're talking about before we go into the zoning and general plan. So, here's a kind of aerial photo showing the subject property, so you can see it's actually surrounded by the Rumiano Cheese Factory. That's the apartment complex. It's obviously between E and F Street on A Street. And here's a copy of our zoning map. So, everything that's with the C1, obviously, C1 Downtown Business District, the RP is a residential-professional district, and R3 is a multifamily zone. So, you can kind of see, and basically, we'll get this later on a little more, but the general purpose of the C1 and the RP districts is kind of creates a transition zone between the commercial districts and the residential districts. And here's a picture of the subject property. Again, it has a six-unit apartment complex on it currently. I'll probably have some extra pictures. This is looking across 8th Street towards the property. Just kind of give you an idea of how close this is to the Rumiano Cheese Factory. I mean, it doesn't get any closer than that. We got another photo. This is just a few feet over the other direction. And one more photo is from F Street looking across, so you can see from the front, the other side, just how close it is. Bounded all the way on the backside of the sides of the property. This is looking across 8th Street from Rumiano's, again, into that R3 zone where you have one multifamily apartment complex there. This is across F Street on that same corner, which is a single family. And this would be looking down F Street towards the north. And you can kind of see, you just have the one single-family residence and then professional offices on the corner up there. And then this is kind of looking across that intersection to the southeast, across A Street, and just kind of gives you an idea. And actually, you... and just kind of gives you an idea. And actually, we'll be bringing this property back again at a later time. So, when considering...I'll give you actually that little background. The reason why the applicant is asking for the zoning changes, sometime within the next...he indicated maybe within the next five years, could be longer. He wishes to actually remove the apartment complex and expand the existing cheese factory business. So, when considering zoning changes, a few things need to be taken into consideration, and I'll just go through these real quick. One, we need to make sure the change in zoning is consistent with the City of Crescent City General Plan Policy Document, as adopted by the city council. Two, the zoning change will not have an effect reversing the policies of the Crescent City General Plan. Three, the zoning change will not create an isolated district unrelated to adjacent districts. And four, basically, it can be served by public utilities, which the property already is. And one more thing we need to consider, furthermore, California courts have found that zoning ordinances, including amendments to the zoning code and rezonings, as well as land use regulations, must be reasonably related to the public welfare. So, we'll start with the general plan consistency. The general plan designation is business-professional. It actually covers both the C-one and the RP districts in that designation for the land use. So, we're really not changing any land use by changing it from C-one, or from RP to C-one. And basically, this designation provides for strong business-government-professional core in downtown Crescent City. The designation essentially serves as a transition between residential districts and commercial districts, as I already brought up. And furthermore, if you look down at the bottom, it also says including specialty food production and sales. So, it allows, actually, we amended this a few years back, to allow for uses like manufacturer food product processing with onsite retail sales such as the cheese factory. Another consideration we need to take in is, in the general plan, we have the housing element. So, in anticipation, if these are removed, staff doesn't believe this is going to be a huge loss to the city. Their market rate apartments, according to the applicant, are not in that great a condition to begin with. Especially if we consider within, I think, less than a mile away, or about a mile away, there's, if we look behind Walmart there, we're getting about a total of one hundred and thirty-five new units. The other thing involved in this was environmental determination. We prepared a negative declaration. Obviously, SEQUA says for land use changes, we need to take this into consideration. We consider those projects. And so, looking at the fact that possibly, we could be losing some housing in there, and then just looking at the general land use, we prepared a negative declaration for the project. I mean, basically, the thought here is that this is...what we're looking at now is the zoning change. Any future projects that come up on that property will have to come back. It'll go through SEQUA process again. It'll also be by use permit, so it also has to go through architectural review, the use permit review, and project will be conditioned accordingly. So, then, staff would recommend the findings, that the council should, one, the project is consistent with Crescent City General Plan and Zoning Code. Two, the project is reasonably related to the public welfare. And let me touch on that a little bit, too. I believe the public welfare in this case is, you have residential units that are located so close to that cheese factory. And there is some ambient noise that goes on at night from that cheese factory, and just generally all day long, what's going on there. They're just a little too close. Three, that there's no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment, and negative declaration reflects the city council's independent judgment and analysis. So, I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Counsel, any policy questions or clarification on presentation by Mr. Taylor? Right, I will open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter? I did have one question. I will close public comments, since there's none. On relocation of the people who are presently housed there, is there going to be a time notice? Would you be offering them like a...could you come up to the mic and...you wouldn't just like tell them that they had to move in thirty days? Or how would you notice the families that are living there now?
Currently, as far as the structures and everything, is that we've renovated it quite a bit. We put a new roof on it. George Meyer's been the contractor, has done some...they've replaced screen doors, upgraded upstairs landings and stairs and stuff. We have no intention of immediately...this is something that the cheese companies looked at this, consolidating the block issues. The one apartment is vacant out of the sixth that's closest to the cheese factory upstairs. We assume over a long period of time, next four, five, ten years, to have an attrition and not worry about so much about evicting people.
Okay.
It's not our intention. Our intention is, we're slowly...we purchased it because of the proximity to the cheese factory, what we're currently doing, and then next, we put the way project in, and we anticipate we have other needs that we need to...we have no parking. We have...yeah, we're kind of, you know, we're sharing a school district across the street. So, that's our goal, is over the long term. The cheese company's been there since nineteen thirty-five, and we hope to celebrate the ninety years. Now, we hope to celebrate a hundred years. And so, we just thought it's a prudent decision at this time, is an opportunity to consolidate a little bit on the thing. But we're not interested in...it looks like we're going to be in the landlord business for a while.
Okay, thank you.
So, as people move out, you're not going to replace?
We hope not to. That's the basic...like I say, we're...there's six units. We have one vacant now that we're leaving vacant, and then, like I say, there are some people that have been there for...yeah, so, almost when it was built. So, but that's not our intent, is we're not looking at doing anything tomorrow or the next day. But we understand that it is a property that's been there for as long as we have almost.
Thank you. Well, I am excited of the prospect of Rumiano's expanding. I go there and buy all my cheese from Rumiano's, and it's delicious. And I even took some to Humboldt County for Thanksgiving, and everybody loved it.
It's also nice to see that when that property is gone, that that whole block will be C, C-one, be a commercial block, and that's what the council has been striving for for years.
Consistency.
Is consistency, yes.
So, are there clarifications, or?
I would offer that Rumiano Cheese for Crescent City is an important landmark, historical business to our community. And we're talking about providing more jobs ultimately, so that's good. Also, the zoning change from RP to C-one, it's been mentioned, is the compatibility is much better. There is a...has been some bit of a noise factor there through the nights, and you've got tenants living, you know, literally next door. So, that can only be good to eliminate ultimately the housing there. And then, I'm happy to see the investment, or the reinvestment into the community on the part of Rumiano, which is another contribution to our city. So, I'm very positive about it and fully support it.
Okay, with that...
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the full reading and introduce an ordinance entitled Number seven-six-five, an ordinance of the City Council of Crescent City, amending the City of Crescent City zoning map for APN number one-one-eight-dash-two-three-zero-dash-forty-five.
I'll second that.
Do we have to read out the recommended findings, Eric? I know we did with planning commission. Is that something you want us to identify in our motion? Maybe Mr. Black could clarify.
I don't think you have to read them out, but it's good to reference the findings as set forth in the staff report.
And I also recommend the findings of the city staff on the three findings.
And I'll second that.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Slerth?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Enya?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. Is...could you get Councilmember Shalong? Thank you. And we'll move on to item eight-B, and that is to conduct a public hearing regarding the rezoning of six-eight-one-H Street. Consider waive full reading and introduce an ordinance entitled Ordinance Number seven-six-six, an ordinance of the City Council of Crescent, of the City of Crescent City, amending the City of Crescent City zoning map for APN-dash, what, number one-one-eight-dash-one-seven-zero-dash-zero-one.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and I'd like to ask Mr. Taylor to present the staff report.
And this is application RZ-eleven-zero-two. The applicant came to us a few months back, requesting a zoning change on his property. Basically, the property's in escrow now to be sold. Problem with the current climate now, that a lot of these lenders don't want to lend on commercially-zoned properties. Unfortunately, for the owners of this property, it's a single-family residence that has now been zoned commercial. So, what they're requesting is that we change the zoning from C-one to RP. So, it's kind of funny, I haven't had zoning changes in years, and all of a sudden, we have two, and they kind of balance each other out, kind of off of C-one and gain an RP. So, again, I got a quick little presentation I'll go through here. Here's the subject property. Again, it's on A Street there, right next door to the El Patio Motel, so I'm sure everybody's kind of familiar with it. Bound by, between Sixth and Seventh Street and H and I Street. And here's a zoning map. Again, you can see the...everything's C-one, that is kind of lighter color. That's the Downtown Business District. RP, again, is a residential-professional district. And kind of to the north, we have a little multifamily. And I'll say, when I went out and looked at this property, it really become apparent, when you go out and take a look, and actually, this property, the house was actually built in nineteen oh five. And when you take a look at it and you consider the surroundings of the property, it becomes apparent that really, actually, zoning change, maybe it should never been C-one to begin with, that to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood and kind of our historic areas like this, that really a less restrictive, more restrictive, I should say, district, like the RP zoning should really probably take effect on here. And here's a view across Seventh Street, looking at the side of the property. Looking again, across, this is kind of catty corner across the street, this property, seven-ten-H Street, was actually built around nineteen hundred. Again, you look at the church, it was built in nineteen forty-five, so it's about sixty-seven years old. It's actually considered a historic structure. Again, next door to the church, this residence was built around nineteen twenty. And then, this is kind of down the street, this is seven-fifty-two-Sixth Street. This property, I told you, may have been built in eighteen hundreds. I'm approximating around nineteen hundred. It was interesting, I called the assessor to get the ages on there. They told me that it was, somehow, it wasn't public information, so they couldn't give me the exact dates, which I didn't really understand that, so they're kind of approximate. And again, this is kind of up, this is north on H Street, and this house here, just for example, was built in nineteen ten. And again, when you're looking at the compatibility with the residential-professional district, and across the street, you know, obviously, a lot of people recognize that's Stover Engineering, so we have mostly residences and professional offices in this area.
So, Eric, as we move forward, the...can you show the overhead with the El Patio showing?
Sure.
Is that the one we're burning?
You just want to see the aerial photo?
I'm just curious if we want to make that whole block RP, because we're going to be burning down the El Patio Motel Friday night.
You know, again, the RP and the C-one are transitional zones between commercial and residential. You know, I'd say maybe if we were trying to protect that structure, that'd be a possibility. I mean, I think, Jean can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but being that we used RDA for housing set-asides, I believe it needs to be developed with other housing on the property.
It'll be either housing or, you know, possibly refund the housing set-aside funds with some other use. And, you know, you bring up a good point. We can take a look at that as we move through that process, and maybe be back before the council with another rezoning, and for that property to be more in line with.
Well, because if it's zoned commercial right now, then someone couldn't come in and put low-income apartments on it, correct?
No, no, it's not entirely true. Actually, the C-one does allow...
Does?
...the thirty units per acre density of residential only.
Madam Mayor, the nice thing that we do have on this is, you know, we control the property.
Right.
We have a lot of say on what kind of uses can go on there, and then adjust that zone.
Right.
It'd actually be nice to see a development come in that kind of had the character and the flavor of the neighborhood, maybe have a little bit of that architecture. But certainly, if, something we can look at, definitely.
Other questions from the council? Clarification?
You want me to finish going through this, or?
Oh, yeah.
So, again, it's kind of the same as the one we just went through. I wanted to read it all again. But we're looking at the general plan and zoning code consistency, and again, in the general welfare, welfare of the general public. Again, general plan consistency, it's again, it's in the business-professional district, which allows, it's the transitional zone, again, between commercial and residential. Business professionals, far as zoning goes, does allow residential-only, single-family to multifamily residences. So, it's consistent and compatible with the general plan and the zoning code. And again, in the public welfare, I think in this case, we can find, and actually, in the general plan, it does call out for us, it was in chapter five, that the city should work with local property owners to preserve historic structures. So, it actually is called out in our general plan, that this is something that we should be doing and moving forward with.
How does it preserve it?
By giving a more restrictive zoning. I mean, the only other thing, somebody wants to tear this thing down and maybe put in, I mean, office spaces or other multifamily uses.
And they couldn't if, with the RP?
Well, no, in RP, they could allow that, but C-one allows a lot more, like retail, and opens up to a lot more uses. So, actually, restricted in the amount of uses that you have with the RP.
Okay.
And again, you know, any project, if somebody brought that forward, that's something we would look at. That would go through SEQUA review, that would go through architectural review.
The planning commission.
We fall back again on our general plan, and, you know, the general plan would guide our development, so that's what we look at.
I was curious why the banks...they said the request for the zoning change is because the banks aren't lending on commercial zones. Why...what is...what's the reason for that?
Typically, I...and Mitzi's here, she might be able to explain a little better for you, but I know that banks aren't giving a lot of commercial loans right now, commercial property, so maybe they're afraid by giving a residential loan on this property if something happens to it.
That's what I think. I don't know that I'd buy a house with commercial right next door. Could it be converted to a store, make noise all hours of the night?
Well, I think...
I don't know if that's a good risk to buy a house right next door. This one, of course, is different, but I can see why banks might not do it.
Right. And I think they're more concerned with the actual zoning of the property, since it is zoned commercial. That property is zoned commercial. And I think it's maybe more afraid if the house burns down or something else happens to it, about the reuse on the property.
So, do we know when it was zoned commercial? Because originally, it must have been zoned residential to have the structure built.
It might not have had any zoning back in the day. I mean, you were talking nineteen oh five, so I'm not sure they really had a lot of zoning laws.
Because it's inconsistent right now with what exists there, so.
It's really actually compatible, what's there right now.
Maybe we can have a little help from our Realtor, Mitzi Travis. You need to come up to the mic, though, please.
My name is Mitzi Travis, and I work at Bayside Realty. I did sell this house ten years ago. I didn't even realize it was commercial property. There was not a problem. But because of everything that's going on in the banking industry and loans, and it's so hard to get a loan through, and banks are being so picky about everything, I don't know if you can get a commercial loan now. These folks, I think he was going, I don't recall who they're going through, but that particular company, bank, does not do commercial zones, commercial loans. I don't know who does anymore.
So, they're calling it a commercial loan because it's in the C-one district?
It is...it pulled up in the county as commercial zoning.
Wow.
And we've already had the appraisal done, and then somebody said, when it was turned into the bank, well, we can't do this. We can't lend on this, because it's commercially-zoned. So, then, we thought, oh, what do we do now? We spend a lot of time saying, what do we do now these days? So, we thought, well, let's see if we can get it changed, because the person who's buying it is a gentleman who lived here locally and moved to Eureka, and now wants to move back. So, we thought, well, he's going to live in it. He's not going to be doing anything. So, I really think it would probably be better zoned residential-professional. Now, my Victorian, the Anna House, is residential-professional.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's a lovely home, and it's been well-maintained.
Yes, this, it's beautiful home, yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Be careful this weekend when they eliminate that hotel next door.
I want to be over there.
With a hose?
With a hose.
We'll get some turnout for you.
Got insurance on it?
Got insurance on it?
Thank you, Mitzi.
My first thought, Eric, was just that I know that you're not supposed to spot zone, and so that's why I was saying, you know, does it make more sense to make the whole block?
Well, actually, I would just scroll down to the next.
Or maybe you can clarify the spot zoning issue in my head.
All right, I did this here. Okay, there we go. So I'll go back to the zoning map. It's actually really not spot zoning, because you're looking, if you already look on that block, you already have one residential professional on here, you have residential professional up here, residential professional over here. So it's not really considered a spot zoning.
Okay.
It's consistent with what's going on in the neighborhood. And again, a C1 and RP-
It's much easier to see it this way, yeah, thank you.
That's a good illustration.
And again, I'll just read out the recommended findings. For environmental determination, we just went under CEQA Act, general rule states that CEQA applies only to projects that have potential for causing significant effect on the environment. Because there's no proposed future change on this property, I just went ahead and filed the notice of exemption for this. So then, recommended findings, one, the project is consistent with the Crescent City general plan and zoning code. Two, the project is reasonably related to the public welfare. And three, that the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to the general rule that states that CEQA applies only to projects that have a potential for causing significant effect on the environment. Entertain any questions?
Any other questions for Eric? Okay. If not, I will open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I move to waive the full reading and read by title only, ordinance number 766, an ordinance of the City of Crescent City amending zoning map for APN 11817001. Afterstaff has fully found that it meets the general plan for the City of Crescent City.
I'll second that, but I would just like to offer that, to me, that the home is very compatible and contextual, and it has historic value, which is the kind of things that I think we want to celebrate in our community. And getting this zoning change, getting the loan, and fees being paid and exchanged is going to create jobs and work, so it's all very positive.
Could you please, in your motion, include adopting the recommended findings?
We just haven't said that. I'd like to see where you're pointing to first. That's right. Okay, the mayor would like me to amend my motion and add that we would like you to adopt the recommended findings, that it's consistent with the general plan and zoning code, that it's reasonably related to the public welfare, and that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant impact on the environment.
I'll second that.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll move on to continuing business at this time. Item number 10 is consider waive full reading and read by title only and adopt ordinance number 761, an ordinance of the City of Crescent City adding chapter 8.20 Shopping Carts to the title 8 of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Madam Mayor, we heard this at the last council meeting. It's, you know, second reading. It's our question that Eric is here, Mr. Taylor's here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
The only thing that I see is that the cover sheet indicates Mayor Slert and it should be Mayor Murray.
If I may, I just, what I did, just to ease staff time, I just took what was from the last meeting, I didn't, and I just put it in there for you guys.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
I'm sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting. Maybe I can get clarification on the couple of points.
Could you please state your name again for the record?
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City. It says that the shopping carts shall be released and surrendered to the owner or agent at no charge whatsoever, including the waiver and any impound storage fee or fines that are otherwise be applicable. Now, this is after, we've actually went around and reclaimed these carts. I mean, and that's going to be labor-intensive and it's going to cost us money to do that. I don't see that it would be in our interest.
Actually, I'll answer that. If there was a shopping cart in front of your house, you can call the store and they'll come and pick it up. So there's no intensive stuff there. Now, if they don't pick it up and you call the city, city truck will pick it up and take it to the corporation yard and they'll notify the store. And if they don't reply within a few days, they're going to be fined.
Okay, so I see that's like, you're going to give them three days to come and pick this up?
At least three days, and then they'll pick it up.
Okay.
But the fine will take over for the labor that the city adds in.
And, yeah, of that fine, I see that you can't charge more than $50, but it said something about your actual cost. Do you have any idea what that's going to be? Actual cost for picking up carts?
I'm guessing-
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, fifteen minutes of a city person's time, put in the back-
And then storage and-
You just got to put it in the corp yard, drop it off, it's going to stay out in the elements, just like the store does.
So no, no idea how much that's going to be? I mean, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, it's hard to interrupt you.
We can't get into continued, I mean, extensive discussion on it, that you can ask questions and you can talk to-
I know, we don't have an answer and question, you know, I mean, it's just, there's no-
Jesse, you're being out of order.
Pretty cool.
I was going to tell you that you could talk to the city manager and get your questions answered.
You're taking up my time. There is no question and answer session at these city councils at all, and you always, you guys always say that, you know, we're not going to have any discussion. When can we have discussions? I mean, we're just talked to, we're talked down to. We tell you something, you say, oh, we'll get back to you.
You're off the topic now, and I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time to ask questions is before the meeting and going to, you're done now, Jesse.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to me.
I'm talking to the general public.
Oh, you said you.
You can sit down. I said the time to ask questions. You may sit down. Is either prior to a meeting, you may contact the city manager and he will work to find an answer for you to your questions, or after the city council meeting, such as the next day. You're out of order, Jesse. Would you like to leave now, please? Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 761, ordinance in the City of Crescent City adding chapter 8.20 Shopping Carts to title 8 of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Second.
And I would just like to ask really quick if we've had any feedback from store owners?
And that's the interesting thing, this whole process, we actually mailed letters out to them, letting them know this was happening. We showed up the last meeting and nobody showed up to this meeting. It's been in the newspaper.
Safeway has the locking wheels, so they're not-
Right.
Manager Walgreens talked to me, I was in his store, and he had heard about it, and after I explained to him that a shopping cart is found and you're called, you have, you know, you could have three days to pick it up.
Three days.
Right away, he was fine with that. He just, he had just heard about it, I guess maybe he did get the letter.
I think we're probably appreciative of the part where people just take them, and that's now against the law.
He is, he's appreciative of the part that he's going to get them back.
Yeah.
He's happy about that.
And I told her anywhere from, I told $160, apparently in that article, they said they were $200 apiece for those carts. I mean, that adds up fast.
Mm-hmm. The ones I see the most belong to Rite Aid. And I think Grocery Outlet, maybe.
Yeah, Grocery Outlet.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I'll go back to the whole, part of the ordinance too, where they were asking them to come up with a prevention plan. So really, the enforcement for the city hopefully won't be that great, that hopefully these carts won't even make it off the property to begin with. So that kind of addresses that question. You know, I envision us having to go around and pick carts up all day long, keeping them hostage.
Right. I'm glad that you had the communication with the store owners. That's good.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Kelly seconded, could you please? Rich, Rich, sorry. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you.
We'll move on to new business now. Item number 11, consider and adopt a resolution, titled Resolution 2011-41, a resolution of the City Council of Crescent City amending the health and safety element of the general plan to incorporate the Crescent City Del Norte County Hazard Mitigation Plan to the element.
Madam Mayor, again, this is Mr. Taylor's evening to present staff reports to the city council.
I'll make you the assistant tonight.
Great. Pay raise? So again, this is kind of a continuation of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Basically, State Assembly Bill 2140 requires that local jurisdictions provide those hazard mitigation plans. As you recall, back in February, the city council adopted our local hazard mitigation plan. That was prepared with seven other planning partners, including the Harbor District and Del Norte County, and we had a few satellite communities joined in. And then in February 15th, the same month, FEMA actually approved and adopted our plan. But one more step in the whole process is actually us referencing the plan in our general plan. And the benefit for this, for us, of doing this, basically, once we get that adoption and get the language in our general plan, we get, we send that to FEMA, CalEMA, and it goes to FEMA, and they put us on our list, basically. So how it breaks down, I'll get this right here. For the California Disaster Assistance Act states that, and that's attached to the back here, you'll see the code section, that's California Government Code 8685.9. Basically, what that code says is that the state isn't obligated to pay anything more than 75% of their share. So say, in the event of a disaster, what happens? FEMA says, okay, we're going to come in, we're going to help local jurisdictions out, we're going to give you 75% of the total cost. So then states and local jurisdictions have to make up the other 25%. So what California, the government code's saying, well, we're only going to pay 75% of that 25%. So basically that breaks down to 18 and 3/4% state and 6 and 1/4% local jurisdictions. And, you know, if you're talking in the tens of millions of dollars, that adds up pretty quick. What this does for us, if the funding is available and if we have our local plan, we already have it, we get it adopted into our general plan. Basically, if there's extra money, the state, in a lot of cases, will pick up that extra 6 and 1/4%, then local jurisdictions are off the hook on having to pay that. That's the benefit for us for getting this done. And if you look back behind the resolution, I have the section, and where we're asking to put it is in section 7, which is Health and Safety, section of our general plan, and that covers all our hazard, hazard mitigation planning is basically rolled into that section along with a few other things. And if you can see, it's in the strikeout there, so I won't bore you with reading the whole paragraph unless you want me to. But basically what it says is, we have this plan and this plan should be referenced when we talk about hazard mitigation planning related to the city and related to our general plan. It's very, it's pretty vague, it's just stuck in there in that paragraph, it's not under the policies or anything else, because this hazard mitigation plan has to be updated every five years, whereas the general plan is really, is only obligated every 20 years. So this allows us to look at that plan separately and it's not really tied to the general plan itself, other than, it's like housing element has to be every five years, but that's actually in our general plan.
Any questions?
So this just puts us in correct order in case something major happened in our city, we would have all this done.
Correct, is it the final step in the preparation and adopt?
Which we're going to start is to adopt.
Well, we've already adopted the plan, it's just the final step, just to reference it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarification? Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I would move to approve Resolution Number 2011-41, a resolution of the Crescent City Council to amend the health and safety element of the general plan to incorporate the Crescent City slash Del Norte County Hazard Mitigation Plan into the element.
Second.
And for those of you who haven't seen our general plan, you can look at a copy at City Hall if you so desire. Mine's old dog-eared from when I was on the planning commission. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Item number 12, we are going to postpone until our December 19th meeting so that we will have our full council present. And with that, I will move on to city council items. Are there any legislative matters to consider at this time? No legislative matters? Reports, concerns, referrals, and the city manager, Mr. Plotso and I discussed, we had referenced it previously when discussing the overtime for the police department, that you wanted clarification on a directive that you'd had by the council previously on the hiring freeze?
That is correct, Madam Mayor, and thank you. When we discussed our budget about two months ago, the city council directed as having a hiring freeze, and I wanted to clarify that, wanted to clarify that and identify four position needs that we have that are already allocated in, you know, the city's budget. Three of these positions are at the wastewater treatment facility, two wastewater treatment plant operators, and one lab tech. We're down those positions and definitely need to, we hire those positions so we have adequate staffing, you know, at those facilities. And then the fourth position is the police officer position. We have one police officer that is retiring and want to move forward with, you know, rehiring that position.
So essentially, these are refilling the positions, they're not new hires?
Refilling, you know, positions that are vacant, they're allocated within the budget, correct.
So, yeah, not new addition.
So I wanted to make sure, they're not new positions, that is correct.
I think that if, if the council so wants to direct you to unfreeze the hiring status, don't we have to have that on the agenda to take action?
It's just a directive.
We did it as a directive to come to us-
I think you did it as a directive.
He was going to come back and if there was an opening that he felt was important to ask, we said, unfreeze that position.
And I interpreted more of, you know, when you're going to hire, please come back to the council, let's discuss it, you know, whether, you know.
Okay.
And their budgeted positions.
There's no room in the budget to add positions, new positions. These are, you know, allocated already planned for within the budget. We've had, you know, employees, you know, that have now left in all four of these positions that we need to, you know, rehire in order to operate our facilities properly.
I don't find what that-
So, do we have consensus then from the council?
Yeah, I was going to say, I did not know that Mr., is it Mr. Doyle that's retiring?
Yes, Detective Doyle.
That was a little bit of a short notice.
Anyway.
It's too short for me. We need him.
We do need him. Wish him the best.
Can you say no?
I can.
No, he's offered to come back as a-
He's offered to come back as a reserve officer.
I would like to say no. Officially. And I wanted to mention, when Mr. Gitlin brought up the percentages of comparing us to UCAIA and Willets, I would assume that their city limits are much bigger than a two-mile radius and therefore would cost significantly more than what we, our police and fire costs from our general fund.
There's a lot that goes into analysis when you put together a police force in your city, you know, what's your square miles, how much do you have to cover?
Population.
What is the need, you know, within the cities? You know, some of those cities, you know, if you have a college in your community, you're probably going to have a little bit more of a need. You know, there's a lot of variables that you have to look at, not just percentage of the budget.
So for instance, with Arcata, with Humboldt State University.
There's going to be a lot more need.
Right.
For that, so we.
Willets, though, Willets is only 5,000 people, and they're spending 59% of the budget.
Well, they're not very good budgeters.
Well, and it may be based on the, it may be based on the revenue too, on how they, you know, what revenue.
They have a lot of businesses.
So, you know, there's a lot of variables in that, and so it's hard to just pluck out one variable and say, this is, you know, what you have to model. You just can't do that, you have to really look at, you know, what is the need of the community, how large your community is, and take a look at all that, so, and we do.
Any new directives for the city manager other than refilling the vacant positions? Right, will you have that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Reports from council members? Councilmember Slert?
I've had kind of a light schedule the last week or so.
Imagine that.
Everything is relative. I attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority with my colleague on this past week, and was happy to attend downtown Crescent City, I'm not going to say bid workshop, but workshop regarding downtown Crescent City improvements in future, last Friday. And then I was happy to participate with the grand opening of Frontier's new facility downtown, one more business downtown, that's always good. And then we had a good city council strategic plan workshop on one of the most beautiful days I've ever seen in Crescent City.
Thank you for your time.
That's all.
I did a lot of the stuff Charles did. I did the downtown workshop, which I thought was very good. I went to the Frontier Communication opening, and I agree with you, it's nice to have that building opening again, it's been several years. I attended the LAFCO meeting for you, I enjoyed that.
Thank you.
I went to the holiday parade, so, the holiday parade is, and let me tell you, that is probably the best one that I've ever attended in all my years being here. And the helicopter was interesting landing, but the best part that I think I enjoyed was after the parade, when everyone gathered in the plaza. I don't think I've ever seen so many people in one spot, and the city staff are to be commended, and the workers, that, it looked absolutely beautiful. It was really nice, the way they did the poles, the way that the lighting was, it was absolutely beautiful. And that's all I heard, was positive comments about it, and wanted to, I wanted to thank the city for doing that.
And I.
A lot of people rediscovered our plaza.
I would add to that and echo what you're saying. I was able to participate on the periphery because of my illness, but I had never seen so many people. I mean, it was a huge success. And a big part of it too was the tsunami landing being down.
Yes.
So that you could visually see in that big old, the old Christmas tree being gone, you can actually see into that plaza now, so it was, I thought, a huge success, and kudos to the ladies that worked very hard to put that together in an extraordinary short period of time.
And it wasn't, it wasn't, you didn't have that feeling of being crowded, because as people left or came in, they came in four different ways. You know, there just wasn't one way to come in, it was really nuts. So if you would pass that on to the city workers, it was very, very good.
Well, I think the last thing I remember doing was going to the holiday light parade, which was amazing, and, you know, I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said, but I already told the guys the next day when I saw them downtown, what a great job. It is, I mean, it made me feel like I was in a little wonderland, so it was just really, really nice. But after that, soon after, my son broke his shoulder, and we just got home from Rogue Valley yesterday, what day is it, Saturday? So several days of no sleep, and so I'm happy to be here this evening, and really sorry that I missed the strategic planning session, so I'm going to catch up with Mr. Plazzo this week and try to give my input, see if I can still be part of the record.
I'm sure he has notes.
Yeah.
We had your back.
He was one of the scribes.
Good.
We had your back, Kelly.
Yes.
Pardon me?
We had your back.
I'm sure you did. Thank you.
I was so excited about the holiday parade that I was sending our city manager, who was with his family in South Lake Tahoe, pictures, because it was so fabulous, so he got to see some of the excitement and the beauty that the plaza brought to the city. So thank you to the city staff, bid, and to Santa for being there. The kids were thrilled, so it was really fun. I hope everyone had a really nice Thanksgiving, and here we are, zooming into the other holidays, and we have a lot to be thankful for and a lot to be grateful about in our city, so remember that during the season. I also attended the Frontier Grand Opening and the car show, and the Chamber of Commerce ambassadors and the Lions Club did a fabulous job, so I wanted to thank them. The strategic planning workshop was very productive, and it is near and dear to my heart, I feel like we'll be able to move forward in a very prepared and scheduled way, so that we are not reactionary, that we'll be planning ahead. So I'm very excited, and I thank our new city manager, relatively new now, for bringing this to the forefront. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, Redwood Coast Transit, and LAFCO, and the, I just wanted to mention that I took a walk yesterday, and I was over by Howe Park Drive and the park area, and I was really excited, Jim, to see that the rest of the trail was finished, and it looks really, really nice. So thank you and your staff for all the hard work that you're doing for the improvements of the city. And I wanted to thank the community for supporting me and becoming mayor, it is quite an honor, so.
I wanted to mention to the police chief that Mayor Murray did an excellent job at that parade policing cigarettes. She told a bunch of people to put out those cigarettes, and they did for some reason. I don't, I don't know, but I don't know how she did it, but she did it.
Maybe you should take notes.
So that's just a reminder that there is no smoking during parades. And now I have a letter from Councilmember Charles Slert, it's dated December 5th, and it is with great regret that I read this. Dear Madam Mayor Murray, City Manager Plazzo, and City Attorney Black, this is a painful decision for me and my family, and has been given careful consideration. Given the current economic conditions and a recent unexpected major medical condition of an immediate family member, and the need to relocate, I hereby respectfully submit my resignation from the Crescent City City Council effective January 5th. This makes me very sad. My resignation is absolutely not a response to the recent notice petition for my recall. I have been honored to offer my public service the past three years to my great city, and passionately serve the best interests of the people. Together, we have made some significant progress and positive contributions for a better Crescent City. Thank you to the citizens of Crescent City for your support and the opportunity to serve you. Our city is in good hands. And thank you to my colleagues for the opportunity to work with you. Best regards in your future endeavors. I will help fully in this transition. This is a very challenging time for my family and me, I will have no further comments. Thank you, Crescent City, respectfully yours, Charles Slert, City Councilmember.
Thank you. It's painful.
Well, it's a huge loss to the city. And on that sad note, I will adjourn the meeting until our next meeting, December 19th, at 5:00 for closed session.